Okay, we're here this morning to look at a final version of the warrant.
Do you have the copies for them?
You put the packets together. I thought you had them.
No, I just, I just emailed them the thing.
Okay, while we're just waiting for the packet distributed, we're going to be working on.
If you guys don't mind sharing.
The final.
No, we can, we can look on. We can look on.
It's okay, no, we're good.
We can look on, it's fine, it's fine. It's not a problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all good.
No problem.
Okay, so we are going to be spending a little time today walking through the warrant for the Tuesday, December sixteenth wa- uh, special town meeting. So at any rate, um, you want me to just read the articles? Or would you like to review with us the ones that are remain on the.
Yeah, why don't, why don't, why don't review, why don't we just go through? So Article One, the tax collector demand fees to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasure collector to charge a fee of thirty dollars for each written demand issued by the tax collector, which shall be added to and collected as part of the tax as authorized by GL Chapter sixty, Section fifteen, effective as of July one, twenty twenty-six, or take any action relative thereto. So we currently charge twenty-five dollars per demand. We'd go up to thirty. I estimate it would be either around seven thousand dollars increase, or people will pay their taxes on time. So either way, it's good. Um, Article Two, I would actually like to ask you to strike this from the draft warrant.
Okay.
Um, because I found out we cannot pay this because there was no cable laid. It was only internet. We can't pay it for cable access, so we have to figure out how to pay it.
Yeah.
So I'd like to review that article.
The only, the only thing I would have is, is a recommendation to have a co- uh, conversation with perhaps state individuals who are very knowledgeable about, um, public access. Public access now is more readily available on internet than it is, quite frankly, on the cable.
Yes.
It may be that, um, there's no, there's some, you know, conversation to be had on this, so, um.
Yeah, we have, I have some, I, I, I have to make sure that the, was, this work was even done because I wasn't part of this whole gild out, so there's a lot more work to be done.
Okay, so we're going to remove.
Yeah, remove that. Um, Article Three, Department of Public Works Superintendent Truck Replacement. Just let me know if I'm going too fast.
Nope.
To see if the town will vote to transfer from the capital improvement stabilization fund the sum of seventy-one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and two cents, fifteen, not fifty, and two cents to purchase and equip a new truck for the Department of Public Works, including all other incidental and related costs, or any other sums. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the select board, or take any other action relative thereto. This is to replace, um, the truck that was totaled in the head-on accident. You have the numbers there. I have a different, um, version of the warrant here.
Yes.
Um, so we did get roughly twenty-four thousand dollars, um, from the appraisal. Um, so that would be added to that. This is on the state bid list. Um, so it would be the state truck, and it is a capital item, um, so I would recommend that.
Capital improvement stabilization.
Yeah, I agree. Take it out of that fund.
So Article Four, which is now three, um, budget line transfer to see if the town will vote to transfer seven thousand two hundred and twelve dollars from the FY twenty-six omnibus budget line, zero zero one, zero five five four one dash five one two two zero zero. The outreach coordinator to line zero zero one, zero five five four one dash five one zero 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 zero. Senior Center Director, or take any other action relative thereto. That is to make the senior center director, um, salary whole, since it was taken away um, at the annual town meeting.
Yeah, and we don't pay the outreach coordinator. Hardwick does.
No, Hardwick pays, has been paying the outreach coordinator. That's all that they pay right now is that. Um, Article Five, which is now Article Four, authorized purchase of ambulance. I have revised this article a little bit from being borrowing of a new ambulance to the purchase of an ambulance, as, um, we've learned that we might be able to get a demo ambulance for less money. So the article would now read, and actually I have it right here, if you two would like. This is now Article Four. This is how the article would now read.
That, those are brand new rigs.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasure collector with the approval of the select board to transfer from ambulance receipts reserved, or to borrow the sum of up to two hundred and five thousand three hundred and one dollars in accordance with GL Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, or any other enabling authority to purchase and equip an ambulance for the fire department, including all incidental or related costs, or take any other action relative thereto. So we're looking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Those, those are new ambulances. They're just in stock. They're not custom. So custom you would order. I want X, Y, and Z. Those are, those are pre-built, brand new.
Okay, because I thought one was a demo.
No, not yet. So I just want to be clear about that.
Okay.
Uh, those are in stock.
So are we good with.
So you're, you're buying on in-stock, like you go to a car dealer, you're buying whatever, whatever the dealer has, and you accept what's for options versus building something custom.
So are we still good with authorized purchase of ambulance?
Yes, but I just wanted to make sure in your mind, you knew that it may not be a demo. It's actually just there in stock.
Okay.
Versus ordering something that's custom-built.
Okay, and that would be in addition to the hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that we got for the appraised value from the crash that when Verizon totaled our ambulance. Um, so Articles, and I know Article Six, Seven, and Eight is there, are very controversial. Unfortunately, right now, I do not have the estimated revenue from DOR. I was hoping to have that so people could make a real, um, educated vote.
Informed decision.
Informed decision, um, with actual figures from DOR, but sadly, those have not come in yet. So if it is okay with you, I'd like to remove these until our next town meeting, so that I have all of the numbers for everybody to make that informed decision.
Right, and I would encourage you, we have a, uh, meeting on those, so we can, you know,
Yes.
educate the public on what the numbers are, what the impacts are going forward.
So this is sort of an Airbnb one, number eight, right?
Yes, yeah, it would be, it would be the community impact fee from those. So I recommend just taking out Article Seven, Eight, and, yes, Six, Seven, and Eight.
Mm-hmm, great.
Until the next town meeting.
Okay.
I do highly advise that we do it, though, in the future, if we can.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so Article Nine, Bylaw Amendment Zoning, Chapter one forty, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Berry zoning, Chapter one forty, by inserting a new section, one forty dash ten point two, battery energy storage, as on file with the planning board, or take any other action relative thereto.
Do we have a legal, we have a, a, a legal opinion on this matter? In other words, that we are able to do such things?
So, yeah, so the planning board has been working with, um, the, the.
Special counsel.
The attorney that they chose, Attorney Brian Winner, um, and they are voting on the final draft of it. It's gone to hearing and everything. They're voting on the final draft of it tonight.
Okay.
So that's good.
And it is on file.
And, and obviously, that this would be something, we may need to have that attorney at the town meeting to describe why we and how we can do this.
Yep, so I'm assuming, I'm assuming the planning board has been in touch with him, but I will see.
Okay, just to make sure, but I certainly, it's something that I see a lot of signs about. I don't know, um, the level of knowledge every individual might have about this matter, so.
Yeah.
It's not fair to ask town council to answer the bylaw he crafted. So we need that attorney that crafted that bylaw.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, yeah.
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 Have Attorney Warner come and do that.
I agree.
Um, so Article Ten, now Six, Transfer From Sewer Retained Earnings to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars from sewer retained earnings to the replacement account to purchase and equip a compact loader and hydraulic boom, including all incidental and related costs, or take any action relative thereto. I do want to stress that this is for the compact loader. There was a question, um, from the finance committee, thinking that we had just purchased a loader last year. I think that was a full loader.
Totally different thing, yeah.
This is a totally different vehicle. It's a compact loader.
And this is just moving money to replace money they already spent for that?
Yes, yes, yeah, because they took it out of their expenses for this fiscal year, and they want to put it back for the retained earnings. Um, Article eleven, now Seven, Transfer From Sewer Retained Earnings to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars from sewer retained earnings to.
Installation of heat pumps?
To the sewer, oh, there's a big space there. I just noticed. That's why I was wondering if I, like, missed something. To the sewer equipment account for the installation of heat pumps at the wastewater treatment facility, including all incidental or related costs, or take any other action relative thereto.
These are heat pumps that would be, uh, heating the small vi- place where they, yeah, I know what they are. Um, are we involved in any kind of, uh, re- re-
What, a Green Communities grant or?
We have any rebate on this?
So we're doing right now, our, right now, the Green Communities grant is being used for he- heat pumps here. And then I believe the library is up next, but we, you can only use so many of the credits.
Right.
So ours come first, then the library, so, yeah, right now, we're, they're being used.
Okay, so the, so they would be install- is there any movement on the public safety building, which is, uh, already has heat pumps, that they want to get a more of a solar system? And I know that there's been some preliminary work with that, but, by the chief. I didn't know if we were moving forward at all. I mean, as an answer to Larry's question, not part of the Warren question.
I don't know, because I'm not.
Yeah, that lunch is goes high.
I'm not mentally there.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I know that I, that the chief.
Well, the thing, the things that people would say.
Yes.
Because if you look at our budget, we spend in excess of five thousand dollars a month to heat the public safety building with splits.
Yes.
Okay, there's something wrong with that equation.
So I know, I know that the chief has, um, has the documentation that he needed to get the quote, to get everything.
Okay, okay.
Um, Article Twelve, now Eight, Vacation Pay Advances to Employees. This is just a housekeeping, keeping item, um, because it currently says it in our personnel policy, but it was never voted at town meeting, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of GL Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-five, to allow the accountant to make advance payment of any officer or employee thereof in advance of their regular vacation, to the extent of the pay which he is about to be entitled during such vacation period, under such regulations, as the town treasurer may prescribe, or take any other action relative thereto.
I should say he slash she. No?
I'm sorry?
It should say he slash she.
Well, or they.
Or they.
I, yeah, I'll change it to they. I try to change things to they as they come up.
I do too, but that is.
I can't catch them all.
I'm with you.
But I will change that.
Thank you.
Um, so are all of these Articles acceptable to you? Would the ones removed, that would be Article Two, Prior Year Bill, Article Six, Local Option Meals Tax, Article Seven, Local Option Rooms Tax, and Article Eight, Local Option Short Term Rental Community Impact Fee.
I would, I would seek a motion to remove from the proposed warrant the Articles that have, uh, been noted, and that would be Article Five.
Two.
Was it two?
Two, five.
No, two, six, seven, and eight.
Two, six, seven, and eight, uh, as we await further information from the Department of Revenue and our legal counsel.
I make a motion that we remove warrant Articles Number Two, Six, Seven, and Eight from the warrant at this time until we receive further information from the DOR, and at the recommendation of the town administrator.
I would certainly second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And, and just to be clear, Article Two is the prior year bill, which we're removing because we're not sure where to pay it from yet.
Yep.
Okay, so.
So we.
With those changes, we would, we would vote the warrant as presented?
Um, yes.
Okay, um, we just do, we just voted to remove those, correct? Okay, now we'll accept a motion to accept the warrant as presented with those changes. You have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the warrant as amended, um, removing Articles Two, Six, Seven, and Eight.
I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So if we can take a three-minute recess, I'm going to go remove these Articles, email this warrant to the town clerk, so that she can get it printed, so that you all can sign it.
Right.
Um, and then we can go through and do favorable or not favorable for each of the Articles. Okay, thank you.
Well, we'll recess for the next, uh, three minutes, but we'll probably say ten or fifteen.
It's not going to take that long.
Okay.